These candidates here are vying to become Wellington's next mayor, the capital city of New Zealand, and they're going to be answering these questions over there on why they should get there. But with every election, there's one thing standing in the way, and that's your vote. Okay, kia ora everybody and welcome to It's in the Ballot. I'd like to join Linda McGregor, has joined me back behind the desk for the statement.
Kia ora, kaitoa, tēnā kou.
Okay, that was a bit of a, little bit of a, having the screen pop up on there. That was definitely not right. And no, I'm not Chris, I'm Sam. Thank you. Chris decided not to turn up. Now, we have a long list of apologies, no-shows, and all of the above. We can tell you tonight that we have Ray Chung present, we have Ellen Blake present, we have Kelvin Hasty present. We were meant to have Paul Eagle providing answers remotely because he's at the Victoria University Maori Meet Candidates. He failed to deliver. We have Tori Farnell, who is also at the Maori Meet Candidates. She also failed to deliver pre-recorded inserts and answers on behalf. We've had no reply from Andy Foster, and we've had no reply from Chris Dudfield, and we had an apology from Barbara McKenzie. So it looks like this Wellington is cursed with the plague of incumbents are scared to come on It's in the Ballot.
It sounds like it, yes.
If we can get Campbell Berry and Wayne Guppy on the show, why can't we get Andy Foster, Paul Eagle, Tori Farnell? You know? However, we can finish doing our little bit for the night. Let's get off to our electoral video to find out what's in Wellington, where you can vote for for the mayor of Wellington, and how everything all works.
Mayorial race, Wellington City Council. The Wellington City is the capital city of New Zealand, which also features the legislature known as Parliament and the executive being known as the Beehive. It also features Government House, which sits in the suburb of Newtown. Wellington City from the south, stretches from the south coast with the Cook Strait, has Meriman Peninsula towards the east of Wellington, and then stretches as far north as Tawa. It also includes suburbs such as Johnsonville, Kandala, New Zealand's largest suburb, Karori. It also features Newtown, home of Wellington Hospital and Wellington Zoo. It features Brooklyn, Island Bay, Oirental Bay, Newlands, Fawdun, and a few more that there's too much to mention tonight. Now, let's get to the important part, the voting system. Wellington City Council uses the voting system Single Transferable Vote, better known as STV. When it comes to electing for mayor, you rank your candidates in the order of preference you'd like them to be elected in, starting off with number one being who you prefer first, and number two, number three, number four, and so on, until you've ranked all the candidates you would like to rank in for mayor. You can rank as many candidates as you want, or as little as you want.
Okay, I hope that sits there and helps you tell you where Wellington City Council boundaries are. And just a little heads up, Tawa, you do vote for Wellington City Council, but for the regional council, you vote in the Porua area. I know it's a bit confusing, but that's just the way it is.
In the perfect world though, Sammy, would you have Tawa in the Wellington area, or would you have them in Porirua?
I don't know. My parents, no, no, my mum was a Tawa person, and Tawa was very anti-to-be-part-of-Porua-in-89 reforms, and that was the consolation prize of joining Wellington.
Oh, lucky us.
But I mean, Carterton can also be the sitter in the same vote as well. They didn't want to be part of Masterton. Yeah. Okay, so let's get first up for our opening statements. Kelvin, you're up first.
Thank you. Hello, how's everybody tonight out there in the audience?
Awesome.
My name's Kelvin Hasty. I'm pretty well-known around here for starting New Zealand's first predator-free community in Crofton Downs. We're in Kandala here tonight, so it's pretty close to my home turf. From there, I scaled it up to 22 more communities and bought the Next Foundation Greater Wellington Regional Council and Wellington City Council together to create Predator-Free Wellington. I don't know, has anyone heard of that one? Yeah, yeah. So what most people don't know about me is that I've worked on large infrastructure projects around the world, so wind farms, solar farms, motorways, tunnels, and rail. So I've got a really good in-depth background when it comes to infrastructure, and certainly that's something that this council needs, and it's something that I could definitely bring to the table, and it seems to be lacking. I think Let's Get Wellington Moving is a pretty good example of that. It's pretty disappointing that most of the other candidates haven't turned up tonight, but hey, it just gives me an opportunity with them not being here to let everyone know who I am. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Ellen. Your opening statements on why you should become mayor.
Māhenui, te whanganui atara, no deira, tēnā koutou kato. Vote Ellen Blake, number one for mayor of Wellington. I'm your truly independent and non-affiliated candidate. So our wonderful city's facing some global and local challenges. It with demands on people, resources, and the environment. So we need to act. We need to heal from COVID-19, we need to meet our climate action targets, we need to keep our natural ecosystems thriving and the economy rolling, and ensure everyone has a place to call home. There's a lot to do. But the good news is that in Wellington, we've got some strengths. We've got a high public transport use, and we've got a walking culture. We've got impressive parks and beaches, we've got popular urban spaces, and we've got well-established services and activities. So using the strengths, I want to take action with high-value but not high-cost projects to support better, climate-friendly transport, which means bus priority and bus lanes, and some decluttering of the footpaths. I want to see some development of more and varied green spaces. In particular, there's some definite need in the inner city, but everywhere we need to see a greater variety of park spaces available. And I want to see that we provide quality, affordable, accessible housing for everyone because adequate housing is a human right that obviously is one of our big issues as well. I want to make sure that we can create more vibrant public spaces. And I was born in Wellington, I've worked and brought up my family here. I'm a government policy person, and I do a lot of work with community groups, both NGO and community-type groups, leading and working with First People who all want to come to do one thing, so we work in a collaborative way to get good results. So together, let's find local solutions for some of these big issues, working together. Vote Ellen Blake, number one. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Ray.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's really a pleasure to be in here. In fact, I was in this hall about six years ago that we started up the Andro Residence Association. We found that there was no representation for the people in this area, in Kandala, Broadmeadows, and Kaiwarra, and so we set up this Residence Association in this very place here. So why do I want to run for mayor? Well, I just look at the council that we have now and find that they're lacking in so many areas. There are so many in the council now that who just follow the ideology, follow their orders from above, and don't do the best for the city. Whenever these people get elected, and when they go and sign the pledge, they actually have to say that they'll do the best for the majority, if not all of Wellingtonians, not just for select groups, and yet this is exactly what they're doing. So they're following the orders from above, and that's all they're aiming at. So I have two platforms for running. First is to get the infrastructure fixed before anything else, and that's everything. It's every other project comes second to getting the infrastructure fixed. Then the second platform I have is to save money and to stop the council from wasting money. I had an article, or the Don Post wrote an article on me about two months ago, and from that day on, I've been receiving phone calls from people in the council, and they're saying that, "Hey Ray, look, next time you're downtown, let's have a cup of coffee, and we'll tell you about some of the things that are happening in council." So since then, this is a weekly meeting that I have now, and they keep telling me about areas where the council's wasted money. Some of these things are actually, some of these projects are actually in the paper and the press, but some of them aren't. But I'll just go through a few of them. One of them was the CFO, the Chief Financial Officer of the Wellington City Council, said there was a mistake made in charging businesses for water. So they undercharged the businesses by $3 million. But you'd think that the CFO would come out and say, "But don't worry, you know, we've sorted this out. We're going to charge in route respectively, and it's not a problem." But no, she didn't say that. She said, "It's no big problem, it's $3 million, but don't worry, we'll just borrow another $3 million," and it'd be right. Now, this is absolutely ludicrous from the CFO. Another thing, you know about the two buildings in Civic Square? The Municipal Office Building, Civic Office Building? They're big buildings where the council used to be. Well, four months before they moved down, they furnished those two buildings at $1.3 billion, $1 million, and had brand-new furniture, new furnishings, and when they moved up to the terrace, because of the earthquake torrenting thing, they said that, "Oh, look, help yourself to any of the furniture because we're not going to take anything with us, we're going to dispose of it all." So they went up to the terrace, and on the terrace, they spent another $1.2 million on buying brand-new furniture. Now, filing cabinets, chairs, tables, they don't wear out in four months' time. But this is the ethos of the council. They don't care how much money they spend. There's so many things. Most of, well, a lot of you will know about the roundabouts in Aitaitai. It costs $570,000, that was in the Don Post, $570,000 in less than two days. Now, this is absolutely ridiculous because someone decided that they'd put nice ceramic tiles on the top. So the first bus that went over, it cracked the tiles. But when I went down to council and had a meeting with those people down there, they said, "No, it didn't cost $570,000." And I said, "Well, that's great because that's such a huge amount of money for a bit of concrete." She said, "It cost under $1 million." But the council didn't want to charge it to that project because they said that if ratepayers found out about that we spent $1 million on a roundabout, they would go absolutely berserk. And so we should. But I'm going mad at just $570,000. So these examples, they just go on and on. Only last week, the council voted to give $20 million to building developers to make their buildings look nicer, to make them prettier.
Now, Ray, you're going on a bit of a tangent there.
Okay, I'm being stopped here. I'll carry on with the other questions. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Now, Andre, I was wondering if you can put the camera on the ballot box camera because we've got the questions we think you'll be asking after watching today's show. What was it? Which candidates are going for all or nothing, and which candidates are hedging their bets? Number two, who will you prefer the mayoral candidate signal to which ward councillors they want on their team? And number three, will Wellington start a new pattern in making their mayors one term only? Wondering if you believe that might be some of the questions they're going to be asking?
Well, it could be, we don't know. It's really exciting. We've got so many questions to ask tonight from our candidates, the candidates that did come here tonight. So I just want to say a really big mahi out to anybody who is running for local government, anybody who is running for government. It is probably one of the scariest events that you could ever do because you're really putting yourself out there, and you're putting yourself out there for public scrutiny, and you're relying on someone's vote for you to get in. So thank you so much for, A, putting your name forward, for stepping up, and also for being here tonight. So thank you so much. Big clap, pu mātaki paki.
Okay, we're going to take a break, and Linda will get ready for all the fantastic box opening.
Excellent.
See you after the break. Okay, ready when you are, Ray. Okay, welcome back to It's in the Ballot, and we are off for the round with all the questions here. So with It's in the Ballot, the candidates go out and pick the box numbers. Now, they've been given the list of what the questions are in advance, which have been submitted by you, the audience, members of the public. However, they don't know what box number it is. I don't know what box number it's in, and neither does Linda because we want to make sure we cannot gerrymander it in any way, shape, or form. Now, with the tradition like the TV show It's in the Bag, there are two booby questions. One of them is called "The Third Question to Another Candidate", the other one's called "Dodge the Question". The principle behind them is for the candidates not to use them because if they did use them, they would be not accountable for their actions and trying to hide behind things. However, when a candidate gets a booby question, they get the card as a "Get Our Jail Free" card, and then they sit down there and choose another box number. So Linda, I just want you to check, all the seals are still in place on the boxes?
All the seals are in place, Sam.
And your independent scrutineer is sitting right next door to you.
My independent scrutineer is here to my right, yes.
Yeah, okay. Now, I need someone back on the control desk. Are you playing around with the mics, Ray? Because at the moment, it's like, "Hi, it's Sam here." Okay, so let's sit there and start off. Ray, what box number do you want to pick?
I will start with number one, please.
Oh, number one. Okay, so as you can see, these boxes are sealed. Now, I've got my trusty clippers. I'm trying to do this all with one hand. I'm going to put this in here.
That's all right, you've got a tablet stand now.
Okay.
Now, can you say what the question number is so our remote editor at home can put the question on the screen?
The question is question 21.
I thought we used that as an example a bit earlier.
Is it there? Okay, question 21. The council has, oh, calm down there, Sammy, calm down, calm down. Okay, question 21. The council has committed to normalising Te Reo Maori and Pūneke. For me, normalising means to me that it thought it was not normal. What will you do to ensure this happens?
I believe that everyone has a right to use in whatever language they like, but I'm not sure what normalising actually means. If this actually means that people will speak Maori every day and in every circumstance in the council, I'm not sure that would be so effective because of course, there are many, many people in council and outside of council, customers, who don't speak it and don't understand it. So I think that I wouldn't be an advocate of pushing it and saying that this should be normalized, whatever normalized means. I would leave it open to people to use it if they want to and not use it if they don't want to.
So can I get you kura? Kura. Do you know what kura is?
No.
School.
In school?
Kura is the Maori word for school.
Yep, okay. So what are you asking me?
Would you use kura?
I would say kura.
Well, I'm not sure if that's right or not, but I'll believe you.
Take Linda's word for it.
I think, though, what we've got here is actually the definition of normalising. So what is normalising? So that was actually quite a good response to the fact. So until we get that, is normalising means that it should be part of the council and of the everyday practice? So thank you.
Okay, next up, Ellen, what box number do you want? Come on, audience, what box number?
What box?
11, 11, 11, audience, 11.
And make sure you get the mic up so the people at home can hear you.
Okay. Box 11. So question 16. So question 16. We need more affordable housing. How will you ensure more land is freed up to build high-density housing? Will you advocate for the council to help buy land in the right places, such as along the city to the southern corridor?
Put your, right question, okay? I have to eat the microphone. So that was about, what should the council do about getting more dense housing? So, great question. So in the beginning, I said that I think that everybody has a human right to adequate housing. So it's really important that we address some of this because we know that there's a lot of people who haven't got secure housing at the moment. So this is about land availability. So particularly for public housing and affordable housing, there's a need for public housing. So the council or the government or someone has to buy it and build good housing or swap out apartment blocks to make them into publicly available housing. So there's a real question about funding of all of those at the moment, and I know that the council's just agreed to have a, they call it, community.
Put it into a housing, put it into a trust.
Yeah, put it into a housing trust. I'm not sure still where the money for some of the funding for more housing, for public and social good housing will come from, but I think we definitely should be having some. There's lots of land, there's lots of land for buying if you've got the money.
Okay, next up, Kelvin, what box number? Oh, so exciting. Number six, thank you.
Number, wow, we're taking all the front row this evening. Okay, so box number six represents, if I can get the question out, question 12. This is a good question. Newtown Shopping Centre is in dire need of an upgrade. Well, with better facilities for walkers and a safe cycle route, when will we see this, and how will you support it?
Well, that's a very, very good question. As it happens, one of my key policies is an east-to-west bypass tunnel under the city because most people don't realise that State Highway 1 runs through the, straight through the middle of Wellington. As long as State Highway runs through the, straight through the middle of our city, it's not a city at all. It's a city... It's a city divided by cars. As we grow, it's only going to get busier. So we're going to get more vehicles travelling through the centre of our city. So if we put those vehicles under the city in an east to west tunnel bypass, the same's been done at Waterview in Auckland, it costs $1.4 billion. We're talking about spending $7.2 billion down there. So 1.4 is not that much in the scheme of things. So we're going to have to ditch light rail to do that, but we can create walkable catchment. So if we think about from Island Bay back to the CBD, if we put in maybe two or three more town centres in between, then we can create a walkable catchment corridor. At the same time, by taking State Highway 1 out of the city, we'll be unleashing a huge amount of land that we can then use for housing. And we can do that really, really quickly once we decide on putting all the infrastructure under the ground as opposed on top of the ground. So we can create walkable catchments. We can create affordable housing for students and for essential workers. Businesses in the CBD are crying out for essential workers at the moment. And at the same time, we can then free up land for cycle corridors, separated cycle corridors and separated traffic, public transport corridors.
And there's an engineer behind the camera stand that you might have a very good conversation with at the end of the night. Okay, Ray, what box number do you want?
How about 16?
16.
Yes. My IQ.
There we go.
You sure you haven't got a zero on the end of it?
Okay, so box number 16, which is question 24. So what I'm going to do, speakers this evening, we're going to hold you to the questions. Okay, so listen to the questions and answer the questions, please. Okay, question 24. Covid has shown us that we need a bit more space to move around and not catch contagious diseases. At the moment, those in cars have all the space and pedestrians are squashed onto narrow pavements. What will you do to make more space for those of us walking around the city? Such as one-way streets, change on street parking, two pavements, et cetera.
Right. I walk a lot, every day I walk about 15,000 steps. And so I think that's a lot more than the average. And when I'm walking around, I actually very rarely see very, very crowded footpaths. The only place I'd actually see crowded footpaths is possibly in the CBD from Courtney Place through to the end of Lambden Key. So the focus is actually on those areas there. Now, if you look at those streets, you can actually make wider footpaths. You can actually redesign it so that the footpaths can possibly be twice as wide. And I would advocate for that. When they talk about cars have all the space and pedestrians are squashed, well, I'm not sure that cars do. But if you take the car parks away, and I'm not saying I would advocate that in all the streets, but if you take the cars away, then you have to have some place for them to go. So I think that I made a submission to the council where they built car parking buildings or took over some that weren't being used or repaired or strengthened the ones that aren't being used. So with these car parking buildings, then people have places to put these cars. Because businesses need their customers and a lot of their customers go into those shops by driving into those areas. So if they have places to park, then they will still come. If you take away all the car parks, then they won't come. So I think it's actually a real balance.
Okay.
Next up, Ellen, what box number? Audience, what box number?
21. Wow, we're going strip by strip this evening.
I know. And see, some shows like Waikato Mata, they went 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. And this one, they go, you know, jumping up in the front, so you know.
Okay, so we are going to ask question 15. This is an interesting question. Some councillors have actively supported hate speech against cyclists. Do you think this is appropriate and what will you do to stop it in the future?
I don't think hate speech is appropriate at any time, especially not against cyclists and other at-risk road users. So I think I would, I don't know how you stop individuals from saying silly things, but I would definitely support active, climate-friendly, sustainable transport and show that I have a lot of support for that. So that would be my counter to that sort of behaviour.
Thank you.
Okay, Kelvin, what box number?
Number 17, thank you.
Number 17?
So we're finally breaking the streak.
No, that is now the top row.
Oh.
So we're really just...
They're just eating their way in.
We're following, we're following suit. Okay, so box number 17 represents question 27. This is another good question. How do you propose to foster a more positive public impression of more active modes of transport, such as cycling and walking?
Well, that's a really good question. And once again, it's all about taking traffic out of central Wellington. As long as we've got State Highway 1 going through the middle of our city, it's not really a city at all. You won't find many cities in the world that have a state highway running straight through to their international airport. So we've got to get that traffic out of the city. We've got to get it under the ground in a bypass tunnel. And then the wheels are oyster. We can literally open up pedestrian boulevards, cycleways, walking, scooter pathways. Anyone that's been to Berlin would know what that looks like. Anyone that's been travelled around Europe would know what that looks like. So that's what we've got to do. We've got to support other modes of transport and we've got to get people living in the CBD. We've got to get essential workers in the CBD because our businesses currently have no staff. People are working 12-hour shifts coming in from Loharhat because we're a city without people. It can't continue, it's as simple as that.
Okay, next up, Ray, what box number?
26.
26.
Right at the front there.
So Ray, do you feel you're a bit of an expert on the show? Because this will be your, was it, second candidate appearance and also participating in the pilot?
And remember, three years ago too.
Two, two years ago.
Two years ago.
It was a general election, not a local body, yeah. But yeah.
Okay, now, from box 26, we have question 30. Deferral the question to another candidate. So what does that mean, Sammy?
Well, that means Ray has a get out jail free card if he wants to get out of a question and dodge it to someone else.
Okay, so do I hang on to that card?
Yes, you do.
Yes, you can, there, you just take out that card.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, what box number do you want to replace? Because we need an answer.
How about double two? That sounds like a lucky number.
So Ruatikomart Rua.
I was going to say that.
However, I think I put the wrong name on the graphics there. I have not picked that up in how long?
Okay, so we chose box 22. And that is question 19. Do you know, I get the strangest feeling that somebody has written in a lot of these questions.
They have the same tone.
Yes. Bike thieves seem to be out of control right now, showing that bikes are very popular, but disappointing for their owners. What will you do to stop thieves being able to easily steal bikes in Wellington?
Very, very good question and very pertinent because a friend of mine had her bike stolen, her e-bike stolen only two weeks ago. And what she did though, she took the battery of the bike before she parked it and locked it up. And then the person who stole it couldn't buy a new battery because the battery suppliers now have been told that they have to, anyone coming in to buy a bike, buy a battery, has to provide the serial number of the bike and give it identification. So she actually got her bike back or was abandoned at the railway station. So the issue is, how do you actually secure them? Now, I watched this programme on TV the other day about bikes being stolen. And they said that these thieves go around with angle grinders, they go around with cutters and they cut the locks off these bikes. So putting a lock on it is no deterrent. This was a, is a British programme. And so what the British police did was they got very proactive about it. And they said that they consider that if they catch a certain number of thieves, then that would actually deter other people from stealing them. So they set up bikes.
The Galanties?
Yep, no, they set up bikes here and then they filmed them and they filmed the thieves coming along, eyeing at the bikes and then cutting off the bikes. And as soon as they did that, they arrested them. And they said that after they arrested 14 thieves stealing these bikes and the courts actually treated them very harshly, treated them very seriously, then bike theft dropped down, I think to about 2% of what it was before they started the campaign. So I think that we could actually follow that. The video is available on YouTube, so you can have a look at it.
Thank you for that, Ray. It's something we can definitely put in our watchlist possibly after the election. Okay, next up, Ellen. Your audience? What's box?
Number? Oh, 13.
13.
Forgive my back, forgive my back. Okay, 13 unlucky for some.
Lucky for us.
And box number 13 is question 5. A major criticism of Wellington Council is that its governing body lacks leadership. How do you respond to that and how will you lead as mayor?
Thank you, kiortata. So if I get to be elected mayor for the next three years, I won't be thinking about what they were doing in the last three years. I'll be future focused on addressing some of the key big issues that we need to and getting on and doing some action about them. So I've got a vision of some of the things we can do in three years that a city council can do. And I think that's achievable and so we'll be focused on some of those. So that's around what I was talking about, the better sustainable transport, better parks and adequate housing for everyone. Yeah, so I think that having that vision and going for it is really important and not being a firefighter of just putting out all the little issues that are going around. Because it feels like that we're not going forwards, we're just sort of going around in circles doing things. So that would be what I would do.
Thank you.
And just to address Ryan Street's concern about Wellington Cycle Lobby hijacking our questions, no, they haven't. The questions are about five out of 28 that are about cycle related. It's just fantastically, these candidates chose that. So don't say they've hijacked it because I can tell you right now, they were very carefully moderated and Stacey went to a very good effort to make sure there was a wide variety of questions from all corners of Wellington, not just, as you might also notice, a bit about Newtown, even though that's where I'm currently living.
I think the other thing is though, is thank you so much for watching, Ryan, and everybody at home, because there's a whole lot of effort has gone into producing these events. And I like the questions, so keep rolling, keep them rolling in.
So Kelvin, what box number?
I'll go for number 27, thank you.
Number 27? So box number 27 is question number 10. Now, I'm sorry, Sam, but I'm going to have to disagree with the statement that you just made.
It's another cycling question?
I cycle every day in Wellington. Yes, even in interesting weather. What are you doing to support me as I help you reduce congestion and fight climate change? Please be specific and address safety concerns to cyclists. Okay, so the crux of this question is safety concerns.
Yep, so I'm pretty opposed to pop-up cycleways. I want to see well-built, integrated cycleways. I don't want to see anybody get hurt and I don't want to see anybody hurting anybody else. So for me, it's about coming up with a new plan on how we get, we don't want pop-up cycleways. We want these cycleways to last distance. A good example is light rail to Island Bay. We've got a cycleway there, we're putting in light rail, we're digging up that cycleway and starting all over again. We know how much that cycleway has divided that community. We need a really solid plan. And I hate to lean on the point, but as long as we've got State Highway 1 running through the middle of our city, we're a car city, we're going to be a car city and that's just not going to change. So I really want your vote so we can lean on central government. It's State Highway 1, they have to pay for it, ratepayers don't have to pay for it. Wellington has been left high and dry by central government probably since the 1960s. We need some investment. Christchurch got theirs after the Christchurch earthquake. Auckland has had their fair share, now it's Wellington's turn.
Okay, thank you very much. And that was specific about State Highway number one.
Well, I mean, you probably hate the little bit of an S being by the terrace exit. That was a bit of a Maldun. Let's quickly rush it open and we'll defer it five years and it just never, and we've been like that ever since. If anyone noticed when driving on the Wellington motorway, the little S at the terrace, that was never meant to be there. Okay, what box number, Ray?
18, 18, please. I can't remember what the bingo number for that is, description of that.
Yeah. Anybody know, anyone, anyone, anyone at home? Do you know what the bingo call is for 18?
Come on, type it up and I'll put it on the air. Because that's something we can do at the show, we can put comments in front of the, on the screen.
Okay, another interesting question. So box number 18 is giving us question number one. Will you actually improve the city or just do vanity projects? Either way, what plans do you have?
Now, will you actually improve the city?
Hey, remember, you can defer that question, you can give it to somebody else.
No, no, no.
Okay, right, okay, just saying.
The first part, will you actually improve the city? Of course, that is the very first thing that I'll do. The vanity projects, I've already said that I consider that the infrastructure comes first and everything else comes second. Vanity projects probably come third or fourth or fifth or sixth. So there are too many of these going on, too many vanity projects where I consider money is just being wasted to pander to the whim of people who can get the votes in council. I've travelled extensively, I've worked in 46 countries and I've looked at the way cities are designed in a lot of these places. I really like the way that European cities are designed, but keeping in mind of course, that the topography there is usually quite different from Wellington. But I find that the councils in these different cities, they cater for all the people there. They have, as I mentioned before, about car parks for people to park so they can actually walk into the city from where they park the cars. And they have very, very safe areas. They have pedestrian moors, however, the pedestrians moors that they have are only where people are using and travelling all the time. I think that the current plan to make the whole of Lambden Key, the whole of Golden Mile into a pedestrian moor is actually fraught with disaster because it's actually a huge, huge area. And if you don't have cars and people going through there all the time, then all it'll turn out to be like is what happened to Manas Moor when they made that a pedestrian area. With no traffic going through, with no people sort of walking through and seeing what people were doing, it turned into a place where people went to do drug deals and the crime rate went up significantly in Manas Moor. And so the police had a real issue with it and so they recommended that they actually stop.
Okay. Audience, what number are you going to choose for Ellen since we're probably just going to get referred to the audience? What box number? We're not hearing you.
What, sorry, did I hear 2? Two?
It's already been taken.
Heard two.
Oh, oh, two.
Two.
Thank you very much.
I thought that was 22. All good.
Now, honey, nothing else about State Highway 1, please? Okay, I'm going to have to stop you. Okay, now, box number two, thank you very much from the audience, is question 17. And I swear, if I get another cycle question, the same thing, it's going in the rubbish. Not that I have anything against cyclists.
Patrick Morgan has not submitted any... Patrick Morgan has not submitted any questions, I can tell you that.
My surname's McGregor.
I know who submitted them and it's not Patrick Morgan.
Okay, question 17. The council has to push through some big and expensive projects, particularly Let's Get Wellington Moving and Rapid Transit. I can see where this question's going. Do you think that we are up to the job?
Thank you, what a great question you chose down there. So Let's Get Wellington Moving is the 7.2 billion project to improve transport in Wellington. And it's not just about the big rapid transit and building a new tunnel and all of those things. There's actually supposed to be something happening which is called the Early Delivery Programme, which is not very early, so it is taking a wee while. So the Early Delivery Programme is going to improve things for pedestrians. It's going to improve, do the Golden Mile project. It's going to do what's called the City Streets Project. All of those things will help to make it easier to walk around Wellington, which is going to be really good. It's going to help to improve public transport through the, what's called the main spine. Because now we're going to have two spines with Let's Get Wellington Moving, public transport spines. So those things are going to be really key to unclogging some of the traffic happening in the inner city in particular. Because that's where the Let's Get Wellington Moving focus is from Nooronga to the airport. So I think if we can get those, the early delivery stuff done in the next three years when I get to be mayor, that will be a really big achievement. And we will see some really cool things happening, just making it so much easier to walk and to catch the bus.
Can I just ask you another question based on this? Because everybody's talking about how, you know, we're getting this conversation about cars and cars have to go and everybody has to walk. What does this mean for economic development in Wellington? What does this mean for small businesses and large businesses?
So there's really good research to show that people who do the best shopping come on foot and on bus and on bike. Really good evidence. The Golden Mile is called the Golden Mile because it has the highest footfall in Wellington. This is, and that's why people pay enormous rents to go there because there's a lot of people walking past. Those are the people who do the shopping on the Golden Mile. So it's really important to free up some of that space. There's hardly any parking on the Golden Mile already, much to other people's. People don't really believe that, but it's true. So there's also in a city now, it's not just a place that people come and go. There's 17,000 people that live in that area. So they need to have some more space freed up for them to do the things that people in, maybe in Kandala just take for granted, like having parks and things like that.
We're talking about economic development, we're not talking about parks.
People who live in places do shopping all the time.
Yeah, so I'd really like to know from the audience out there or here, anyone who is a business owner, who has a business in the Golden Mile, and what do they see as the economic positive effects of these projects?
I would like to ask Unity Books people what they think. Because the Unity Books people who are very right in the middle of Willis Street, they have a really high footfall through there and they've got a great bus stop outside. And I bet you that's where most of their customers come from.
Cool, thank you.
What box number, Kelvin?
Box number 19, thank you.
I can also point out that in Melbourne, when they put the new cycleways down, businesses screamed they were losing revenue. At the same time, the Paymark figures showed there was an increase in revenue in the same streets. So that might be something, one was about emotion, one was figures. So that might be something worth looking into when it comes to making your decision on what to do for, you know, what to do there and, you know, look at the facts, not at the emotional response.
I'm feeling emotional.
Okay, so box number 19 is question seven. And question seven. Newtowners put forward an excellent plan for high-density housing which didn't impact our low-rise areas. How will you support this plan if elected? Do you know about the plan in the first instance?
I am totally pro densification. So for me, it's a no-brainer, especially down in Newtown.
It's 2,000 dwellings that can be within one block of Riddford Street.
Yeah, that's brilliant. We need the infrastructure though.
Which is three times.
We need infrastructure. And I'm not going to harp that State Highway One, but we need infrastructure down there because there isn't enough infrastructure in the CBD at the moment. If we have a major disaster down there, we've got people without water. So we can't just put housing here and there on a whim. One of the other things I hope to do with the bypass tunnel is to run the interceptor to Moa Point so we can take that through underground as well. So that should save several billion dollars. But at the end of the day, I'm just not, I'm not impressed with the plan that we have because you can't put infrastructure in areas where we don't have, you can't put densification in areas where we don't have the infrastructure. So I'd need to see an infrastructure overlay to the densification that they're.
Excellent answer.
And I think Martin and Anna are watching who are the people who came up with this alternative plan that would have delivered three times as many homes as what the MPS was requiring for Newtown. So Ray, what box number?
23, thank you.
Twenty, oh, there we go. So box number 23 is question three. In your view, what actually is the role of mayor? And what skills do you bring to the role?
I believe the role of the mayor is actually to direct and to encourage the council to work together on projects, to actually look at their own strengths and weaknesses and work to those, and to achieve consensus amongst them. Now, there will always be things that a group of people won't agree on. So it's always looking for a compromise. I've spent the last 25 years in business, working throughout the world and looking at how I can get compromises from people. Why I need the compromises when I'm out there doing sales is that there are always people with opinions on what they should get and how they should go and what the emphasis on, what importance do particular features take on the equipment that we're actually looking at? And there are always going to be people who disagree with that and want something else. So the objective and the work that I'm tasked with is actually to get compromise from all of them. I can give numerous examples of those and where I had to actually work around people who didn't like what the solution provided and eventually try and find a compromise. So that's exactly what the mayor should do in council as well. Thank you.
So getting everybody across the finish line at the same time?
Yep, absolutely. And on budget.
Yep.
Okay. What box number, audience, for Ellen?
25. I thought the mayor's job is to, the council mayor, approve the annual plan, strategic plan?
Meant to be the chairperson of the councillors, but the leader of the executive council because council chambers are not a House of Representatives, as some people do think. They're an executive council, like cabinet and government, except at a local level.
Okay, we have question six. This year sees the start of the Maori wards. How are you going to ensure there is true co-governance with Maori in our city?
Kia ora, great, great question. So it is really exciting that we've got, for the first time ever in Wellington, a Maori ward. We've never had one before and I'm kind of interested to see how that's going to work out. And I think that part of how it's going to work out is that we need to see who ends up being in the council and then there needs to be some discussion about how that will work and what that role will mean with the person who's in that role as well. So it's not just about, it would be a collaborative effort to come up with that response in relationship with Manu Fenua in Wellington as well, I should expect. Yeah, so I'm quite looking forward to that. This council has already put in place quite a number of measures to, you know, around the Teraio and Tiau Maori to include, be more inclusive than they have been. So I think it's quite an exciting time to see where that all goes. But I think it's definitely a thing that's going to happen together collaboratively in building those relationships with people around the city.
Sammy, can you just tell us, in the Maori ward, who can vote for a Maori candidate in the Maori ward?
Those who are enrolled on the Maori roll. So on our production team itself, Stacey is in that boat. I think you are in that boat. Um, myself, I'm not in that boat, because I'm not of Maori descent. So basically, if you're of Maori descent and you have chosen on the MEO to be on the Maori roll, then you will be voting for the Maori ward this local body elections. And bit of a shout out, next Tuesday, we'll be having Te Fanganui O'Taara Maori Ward show for Wellington City Council. So you get to see three fantastic candidates standing for the Maori ward. All of them, I believe, are first-time candidates as well. So, you know, we've got a bit of a competition up ahead. So Kelvin, what box number?
Number 24, thank you.
Number 24. So box 24 is question 29. Dodge the question.
Okay, I'll dodge the question.
No, 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 you're choosing another box, but you're not getting this one that quickly.
So the rules are, Sammy, you can have that question.
You keep it as you'll get it. Yes.
You can give it to someone else, hold that.
Thank you, thank you so much. Could I have number 12, please?
Number 12.
It's great when you know what the numbers are when Linda reads them out. I need to put a tune in there so when it comes up, it's meant to have a tune that appears on the stream. Should we sit there and do that? Like, da, da, da.
We could do, we could do. It's exciting, exciting. Okay, box number 12 is question. Da, da, da.
Well, it won't be deferred to another candidate.
Question nine. Wellington has long been known for its vibrant youth scene. What are you doing to make sure young people can drive change in the city? Can we define, what is the age that we're defining as a young person? Because we've got young people here tonight.
Well, that's, I love all of these questions. One other thing we've got to stop is Wellington City has become a city where people come out from the Atalang, Apahat City, they come in to drink themselves and do a stupor. We've got to get more arts and entertainment happening in the city. We want people coming into the city to watch poetry, to watch art, to watch movies. We want more festivals. We don't want people coming in just to get pissed and then passing out on the side of the street. So the way for us to get more music and entertainment into the CBD is activation of the CBD. So that's more housing. We need more housing because I know of just one hotel in the CBD that has 14 different positions in 14 categories in just one hotel at the moment. There is no essential workers in the CBD. It is a disaster for local businesses. So when I'm mayor, there's going to be, first thing to do is an emergency housing summit and I'll be inviting housing providers from all around the country to come together so we can quickly build some student accommodation and some essential housing in the CBD so we can begin to activate Wellington and bring it back to where it used to be. Because at the moment, it's not a nice place to go. It's actually quite scary to go down there at the moment on a Friday or a Saturday night or a Thursday night. We've got to change that and we've got to get young people involved in that. We've got to get people playing in bands, we've got to get people thinking about arts again and poetry and that's what we've got to do, in my view. What's that, sorry? So I'm actually opposed to Kainga Aura leading the conversation. I don't know if I'd even invite them to my emergency summit. And the reason for that is because sometimes central government can overshadow private enterprise. So it's a partnership model. The people that own the land in the CBD are private individuals. They're not going to be forced by anyone to develop that land. It's a partnership model. We bring everyone into the room together and we find ways to create housing because these developers want to create housing. But they're not, they're not able to, they're not being enabled to by council.
They want to make money.
They want to build housing, but it's not possible, it's too complicated. We've got a two-storey development that's gone into the CBD, two stories, when it could be six to 10 stories. There is something seriously wrong with this city.
Can we just say that not everybody that comes from Apahat gets drunk? And there's plenty of locals in Wellington that do that, okay?
Anyone that's been down at the Central Railway Station on a Friday night at about 7 o'clock, watching those trains pour in with young people, then pouring into the bars, understands we have, actually, we do have a problem.
I think we have a problem everywhere, but I'm just saying, Apahat guys, you guys aren't the total blame. Okay? My son lives in Apahat. And my daughter, they don't come in and out and get drunk.
Okay.
Maybe they would like to come into the city and actually be engaged in something other than drinking.
Yeah, but they don't drink and go out and get drunk. So that's what I'm just saying.
Okay.
They don't come into the CBD.
Okay, so we're going to take a break and we'll see you back after the break for hard-hitting questions. Welcome back to It's in the Ballot. We've had a good break and we've got to have a good, a catch-up with the audience members here. Now, let's kick it off for hard-hitting questions. Okay, and we've got, now with hard-hitting questions, these are the most commonly recurred questions that have been submitted, uh, to our, for our candidates there. With the theme with, uh, It's in the Ballot, we have decided to make one, uh, was it for every single show, about free, uh, free waters reform? And we're even going to plan to have a montage of yes, though, yes, though, yes, though, maybe da, 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 for, for TikTok at the end of the season, so everyone can sit there and just go, bing, 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 bang, all the candidates who have sat down there and appeared on our show give their opinion. So, our first hard-hitting question, number one is, what is your position on free waters reform and why have you come to that? Let's start off with Kelvin.
Goodness, why do I have to go first?
Oh, because Ray went last time.
Free waters is pretty simple, in my view. So, you know, we're looking to be elected to Wellington City Council as a mayor or councillor. So it's, uh, purely, it's a governance question. So it's not my individual view that really matters. I wouldn't know enough about three waters to make an informed, um, statement on it anyway. But I can say this, three waters will be decided at the 2023 central election. At the mo, it will be repealed by National if they get in, or it will stay if Labour get in. So from that point of view, Wellington City Council needs to strategically plan for both avenues. Three waters going ahead or three waters not going ahead. We can't afford to do anything by, but that, because the uncertainty means effectively, water infrastructure assets are on hold around the country until, to our next year's election. It's an unfortunate situation, but it's the situation that all councils are in.
Okay, next up, Ray, what's your response?
Right, I am vociferously against the three waters. And the reason why I'm against it is because we've been asking, um, Cabinet Minister Mahuta questions about this, because the information coming out has been very, very sparse about it. And she refused to answer any of our questions, so we actually had to resort to the Onslow Residence Association putting in official information requests to answer these questions. The first question that she answered was that, there'll be, first statement that she made was that there'll be nine thousand more people employed under the Three Waters organisation. So I thought, well, okay, that's fine. And she also said that rate payers will save forty-five to fifty percent of their water, what they're currently paying for their water rates now. So we asked her how these two, uh, these two statements actually, um, match, because they seem to be mutually exclusive. If you employ nine thousand new people, that's going to be over a billion dollars, so where are the savings going to be made in, um, to get forty-five to fifty percent of your water charge? So she came back and she said that through quantity of scale. So I thought, okay, well, that's good, I understand what quantity of scales mean. But can you tell us how that's going to happen? Because all the, all the water, oh, sorry, all the water reservoirs in New Zealand are in different places. So how do you get savings from the quantity of scale there? And she came back and said, I'm not going to answer any more questions. So that was it. So I just feel that when you're trying to hide something, there's something shonky going on. So I don't know what it is, but, um, we don't have any information to actually base any decision on that. But as Kelvin says, it's not a decision for council anyway. So it's a decision that's going to be made by central government. But when that comes, we'll see what happens.
And it sounds like, um, uh, Minister Manaya Mahuta probably wants to dodge the question card. Okay, um, Ellen, uh, what's your position on free waters reform and why?
Okay, so, um, on this one, I'm firmly on the fence. Um, this is one of the government's really big, uh, reform projects. It's been kind of rushed through quite, quite quickly with a whole lot of other reforms that are happening, such as the Resource Management Act, um, reform, local government reform, um, health and reform, the tertiary education reform, and some really big reform projects happening all, all together. And so I'm a bit concerned that we are not getting the scrutiny that we need of, of some of these big projects, and particularly the water one. Um, for Wellington, we already have had our restructuring into a Wellington water entity with, um, seven councils combined to that. Clearly, there's some issues around affordability in, um, the, the water area that, whether it's affordability and capacity and capability altogether, it's hard, it's hard to unpick. So one of the things that Three Waters does is, um, change some of the financial incentives. Another thing that they're talking about is asset management. And another thing they're talking about is compliance and monitoring. And I've, um, I, so I thought I'll go and have a look at the legislation. And it's some of the most complicated bit of legislation you could imagine. Um, it's, and I, I work in government and I've helped to, um, develop some of these things. It's really, it's really complex, and so I just think we're going too fast. But like, um, Kelvin says, that maybe the council won't have very much say in it anyway. So I'm just still sitting on the fence. That's, that's my answer.
Not a problem, okay. So hard-hitting question number two. Choose one candidate standing each ward that you would like your voter, uh, your voters to vote for in order to help build your team as mayor. Let's kick off with Ray.
Well, I haven't actually researched that, but let's have a stab. Um, let's start with, say, the eastern ward. I like Steph Edlin, um, she's, she's quite, she's very young, she's, um, just turned twenty-one, I believe. Um, but she seems very, very sensible, um, and the way she approaches problems, I find is very pragmatic. So, so yes, I, I quite like Steph. Southern ward, yep. Um, Lampen Ward, I have always liked, I Own the Planet. You know, she seemed to me to be one of the hardest working councillors that I've ever come across in many, many years. Now, I know she had a bit of a falling out with the Green Party, but I think that hasn't deterred her in how hard she works. So I like her and, um, and she's, she always sticks to her guns, so she's good. Um, northern ward, northern ward, I think that there's quite a few good candidates in there. Um, in those candidates, I, I like, um, um, Rabin, Rabin Anna Muthu or something. Um, I like, um, Tony Randall, so they're, they're two good candidates. Um, can work with, um, both of those. Um, and the southern ward, southern ward, again, that's, um, changing quite a bit. The only, I think the only thing common in what I, um, when I'm looking at, when I look at these other candidates is that I don't want to choose any existing councillors, because the existing councillors have all contributed to a twelve percent approval rating in the city. And that's the lowest, those approving, approval rating in the whole of the country. So the southern ward, um, I like Ummila, um, Ummilabana, because again, she, she stuck to her guns on the, the, um, the cycling lane and the, the area around the hospital where they're changing all their trucks around. Um, she's, she's very firm in what she believes in, um, and she sticks up for the people that, um, that come to her and talk to her about what the issues are in Newtown. I think that there's probably another couple in the southern ward that I like. Um, Paula Mullo, I've spoken with Paula a few times. Again, she's, she's a very determined woman. She's, um, she knows what's, she's, she wants to do what's best for Wellington. And so I think that she'll be good as well. Have I covered all the wards?
I think you just got to do western, but I thought that might be yourself.
Onslow western, I would choose me.
Kelvin has to.
Okay, Ellen, who would? Okay, Ellen, who would, what navy candidate from each ward that you would like your voters to support?
Great question, great question. So I've got a really clear vision of where we need to go and a really collaborative approach. And I'm really clear that the people who decide who are going to be in council are the voters. So you folks out there, the citizens of Wellington, and that I will work with whoever turns up at the table. So I am not going to pick winners. No, you, the voters will, thank you.
Okay, Kelvin, how would you like to build your team?
Pretty obvious from my point of view. It's dodge the question. Because I agree with Ellen in the sense that if we sit here and endorse other candidates, that's not what it's about. It's about democracy. We want people to get out there and understand who's running and understand their policies and get involved. It's not up to us to endorse individual candidates. We'll leave that up to Dori and Paul.
And Andy.
Yes, yes, yes. And if you want written statements from them, I suggest you email them on their retrospective email addresses. I'm sorry, we haven't prepared the graphic to tell you what they are. And sorry, I don't have the phone number that we can sit down there and give for the moment. But I'm sure you'll find it somewhere online. Or you can ring up 044-994444 and be requested to be put through to those people. I'm not sure if you'll get through to them necessarily, but hey, there's no harm in trying. Okay, hard-hitting question number three. Wellington's council has committed to normalising Tareo. How much Tareo do you speak? And what will you do to increase your use of Tareo? Let's start off with Kelvin.
Well, I don't speak enough of it, to be honest with you. With my Predator Free work, I definitely try and use both Tareo and the English names as much as possible, because I think it's important to get that connection between the two. So for me, with Predator Free and our Karradu and our Kaka and all these wonderful birds that we have in our local community, and we've had the Baleberg Goramaka come back, and we've got a stream with the same name in our community. So it's about strengthening those connections between our Taonga species and the areas that we have in our local communities. And that's a really nice way to do it for me. But I don't do enough Tareo, I'll be honest.
Okay, next up, Ellen.
Good question.
Andre.
So I started some Tareo in 1990, which was the 150-year anniversary of the signing of the treaty. So I thought that was an appropriate time to start it. But I would say that I don't get to practise nearly often enough or hear it often enough. So I'm really encouraged that it seems like we're getting more people speaking it in the media and around. And I think it's really encouraging that we are doing that. So I really support the council's move to make sure that we're using one of our key languages from Aotearoa, New Zealand, all the time. The other one, of course, is Sign. And we're pretty good at English, so we're going.
Okay, Ray, who is probably the master of a few languages, from what I hear.
Yes, I've worked overseas for a long time. And so I've been based in Germany. So when I was there, of course, I learnt German. When I was in Japan, I studied Japanese, and I actually studied at university here. And of course, I worked in China, so I learnt the language there. However, I think that Tareo in New Zealand is quite a different thing. It's not, when I was in Germany, most people, of course, spoke German. So of course, you learnt to speak German. Otherwise, you wouldn't be able to communicate. You wouldn't be able to get around. It's exactly the same in Japan. But in New Zealand, I think New Zealand is, all New Zealanders can speak English. And I think that that is the language that most people communicate in. I have no issue with people using Tareo at all. People, I believe that people were quite free to use whatever communication method that they like. But I was overseas one time when somebody said to me, someone came out and they spoke in a different language. And the person who was sitting next to me said that, I think it's actually the height of rudeness for someone to actually come out and speak a different language when the audience can't understand them. And so I took that on board and I thought, well, that's possibly right. And I actually see that here as well. I see people coming out and speaking Tareo when the audience doesn't understand them. But I think that's still up to them to decide what language to speak. So I wouldn't oppose it. But I think that it's a bit, it's not very wise to actually be speaking it if the audience can't understand. So that's my view on it.
And would you support the Jenny May Clarkson approach of you say it in Tareo, then follow it in English?
Yes, yes, I do believe that you should have. If you're going to use it, then you should certainly use both languages.
Oh, yeah, definitely a lot better than some of those people who send those broadcasting complaints, who complain about that particular approach. So, you know, it's interesting. And that's something that she has actually brought up on Breakfast. If you watch Breakfast, she is one of the many flurry of hosts they've had this year, considering I think they've had a few changes on the TV show. Okay, so we're getting off to hard-hitting question number four. Could you please share your thoughts on the COVID-19 vaccination and whether you have any affiliation with Voices for Freedom, the Freedom Rights Coalition, or any other organisation involved in the occupation? Let's start off with Ellen.
I'll start, shall I? So I am fully vaccinated. I totally support public health measures to protect all of the people in New Zealand. And I think it's really important that people think just a bit outside themselves and look after others as well. I think it's really important. Bit of manaki tana, thank you.
Okay, Ray.
Right, I am also fully vaccinated, together with my two boosters. I do support the freedom of speech. And I mentioned that publicly, that I believe that we should allow people to say, to air their views, to say whatever they think. And it's up to us to decide whether we see any truth in it or whether we need to do further research on it. But I do believe that we shouldn't be stopping people from speaking as they wish. The only organisations I belong to are the Onslow Residents' Association, as I mentioned. I started that five, six years ago, and I'm currently the vice president. The other ones is I belong to the SBCA, and I belong to the Onslow Historical Society. And they're the only organisations I belong to.
Okay, Kelvin.
I am fully vaccinated and booster-rated.
Now, you eligible for a fourth one or just the third?
Oh, yeah, third, I don't know.
I know, I wasn't being under 50 myself. I can have three vaccines, not four, because it's recommended for my health not to have four.
Well, obviously, I'm under 30, so. But yeah, fully vaccinated. I'm also a great believer in freedom of speech, but I'm not a believer in extremist views. You know, we've got to have some mechanism for rooting out this disinformation age that we live in. Certainly, when I put my name forward to run for mayor, I've been attacked on my Facebook page. It's been hacked. I've had all sorts of weird things happening. So this stuff happens. It's a real concern. We need to just keep an eye on it and do all that we can to just stay united as a country and as a people, really.
Okay, now, who got some burning question they'd like to ask? Join Linda over by the ballot box table. You're just going to need the microphone. So who's got a burning question they want to ask these three mayoral candidates up here? Come on, come up. Okay, Linda's coming to you.
Hi, candidates. Actually, my questions are a real simple one. Okay, so if you were inviting somebody, inviting yourself first, to be here in Wellington, so what do the words H-E-R-E, here, what does that mean? If you were to extend an invitation firstly to yourself and also to others, to build a bridge to here, Wellington, New Zealand?
So who wants to kick that off first?
I'd definitely build a wall. I wouldn't build a bridge. Or I'd build a tunnel bypass. Here, for me, here in Wellington is probably our centre of government and our centre of parliament. So for me, if, you know, if we're coming here, it's about the roots of democracy. It's about who we are as a nation, nation building, you know, all of those things. That's why we want people to come to Wellington, to recognise us for that. But we also want them to come and have a bloody good time.
Well, that's a tricky question, I think. I think it sort of is. So building a bridge to here, for me, here is home. So home is where the heart is. And I think this is a pretty wonderful place. And I don't think we're, I think we're in good heart, despite all the things that have been happening and despite a lot of the changes that are happening. So I think we're in really good heart. And there's a lot of potential here. I think we've got wonderful people. We've got wonderful hills and trees and birds and fantastic birds with zelandia. And, you know, the beaches and all of those wonderful places. So, but I'm very partial to this place. So the other reason that people might come is Kelvin said it's capital. So that's a really important thing. And I think that as a capital, we should be a bit more proud of that. And, you know, and the capital, the protesting thing is quite, we've never had such a horrible protesting experience, except for what we've had this year. So there's a whole thing to unpack around that as well. But I'm not sure we're going to go with that one. Yeah, bridge to here.
Okay, Ray.
Right, very tricky question. Where would I build a bridge to? Now, I've mentioned that, you know, I live in Broadmeadows. And we walk, we have a walking group during the week. It's not so many, but during the weekend, there's quite a number of us. Now, I know that out of this group that we have, we have 28 different nationalities. And we all get on extremely well. Otherwise, we wouldn't be walking together. And I think that shows that we can get on very, very well with people wherever they come from. And also with that is that, I mentioned that I spend a significant amount of my time working overseas. And I know so many really, really wonderful people from each of the countries that I've actually been to. And I would love them to come over here and experience what I've already told them about what New Zealand's like. I was born here in Wellington. I grew up here. And I talk about what it was like growing up here, and I talk about what it's like now. I actually think that it was a much, much simpler life as I was growing up. And now it's getting more complex. However, I would like to invite all of these people to climb onto the bridge to come to Wellington from all over the world.
Okay, have we got an eager, another question over on the... Well, thank you so much.
Right, for each of you, if you were elected mayor, what would you do to improve the dreadful dog facilities in the city? As far as I know, there's only one very raggedy enclosed dog park. And that is in the bleak area as you go round on the back of Wilton. There is nothing like the fantastic small dog, big dog park in Dunedin. I think the amount we pay for our beloved dogs is not good value for money.
Well, we have Cummings Park in Naua, which is just up the road. Oh, fenced.
I have a deaf old dog. And I have just been in Dunedin, for example. And there are good facilities there, paid for by the dog registration fees. So I could take my deaf old dog there and he could run around and be safe. There's virtually none here, and we pay a lot of money for our little dogs to be registered.
To be honest, I'm dog-founded.
Oh, dear.
Jalasic Park is a wonderful off-leash dog area. Unfortunately, we can't fence the whole thing. We can't put them in zelandia. So I'm just not sure. I'm probably not an expert on this question. So I'm just going to dodge the question.
You've used that already, Kelvin.
I'll use it all night.
Wayne Guppy's ones left in the, was it council chamber? He plans to use it for the council meetings. So Ellen, what were you going to say?
So for dogs, I think we do have a number of fenced areas. I know there's one in Tauri. I know there's one, a new one in Melrose. And I think there's some other ones around. I'm not a dog person, sorry. I can't be an expert. But I think that having enclosed spaces for dogs to run around is better than having them run free. So, yep.
Okay, Ray.
Right, out of the three of this, I am definitely a dog person. I have had dogs for many, many years. I currently have two West Island terriers. I also have a cat. However, personally, I'm not overly enthusiastic about dog parks. And the reason is that I find that so many people don't pick up after their own dogs, which is terrible, I know. But I don't think that the dog parks are actually that got an area for them to be, because there's no distinction between large dogs and small dogs. And as you know, West Island terriers are quite small dogs. And so I'm always afraid that if we share that park with larger dogs, then there could be issues, because dogs are very unpredictable. They, I think that they're better than humans at picking out who they like and who they don't like. And I can't understand, you know, why it is that they don't like some other dogs and why they like some. However, in our group that we walk around with every day, we've talked about this quite often, because all of us are actually dog owners. And we like to have good places and free places for these dogs to run around in. So I've actually been talking to the council about fencing off part of, half of Kanpur Park at the corner of Kanpur Road to be used as a dog park. And they've also suggested that a possible dog park is at the top of Kanpur Road at the entrance to Mount Kaukau. So I'm actively looking for places to actually make these, so that people can actually take their dogs there. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a quick break, and then we'll come back for closing statements from our candidates. Okay, welcome back, and thanks for joining me back at the desk, Linda. How's your family this evening?
I think this evening's been really great. I still just want to say a really big mahi out to everybody who's come in here this evening to listen to the candidates, and especially to the candidates. You know, this is a really, really big event in their lives to run for public office. I think that people don't realise the toll that it will take on both families and, you know, and also themselves, because it's a really hard thing to do. So thank you so much for everybody. And I think it's, yeah, I just want to say thank you to the candidates who came tonight. Yeah.
Okay, let's start off with Ray for your closing statement.
My closing statement, please vote number one for me. I believe that this council has for too long just followed the ideology, and particularly with the current council that we have now. Now, I don't believe that ideology is bad, but when you put it ahead of what's best for Wellingtonians, then it's not right. And I had this debate with Aina Panet about this, because she has very strong views on this as well. But I believe that this council is not doing the best for Wellingtonians. And if you elect a new council, we will. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Ellen.
So vote number one, Ellen. So vote number one, Ellen Blake for mayor. I've got a clear vision of where we need to go. I know what we can achieve in three years. Not, I'm not going pie in the sky. I've got some very achievable targets to help make sure that we address our big issues around climate change, biodiversity loss. We've got a recession, we've got to recover from COVID. I've got some really clear ideas on what, what we can do to, to make that happen. And I think Wellington's a great place, and it can be even better if we all stick together and help to make it a better place, better Wellington together. Kia ora tato.
Okay, Kelvin.
Well, firstly, thank you for inviting me along tonight, unless I showed up.
That's, there are 60 empty seats sitting around there for candidates who didn't turn up as well.
The reality is, we have a very divided community at the moment. Only 18, 12% of Wellingtonians are in favour of the direction that this council has been going through over the last three years. When we started Predator Free back in around 2014, community connectivity was off the scale. And we were looking at around 80% in favour of, of our current, current council. The numbers are simple. We've lost our way along the way. We've lost the communication and talking to our communities. We have a council that's not outward facing. Our current mayor refuses to engage with the community. He thinks he's engaging. I don't think he understands what engagement is. We need to engage with our private sector, with our businesses, with our communities. We need everyone to get on board, join together, and to make Wellington the amazing place that it was when it was number five as the most livable city in the world, and it's just dropped to number 50. We can't afford for it to drop any lower. We're falling off the radar. Christchurch has overtaken us. Auckland is destroying this city, because it's a vibrant happening place. Got to get people back into the CBD. We can't wait till 2045 until light rails completed. We need it in the first 100 days. That's why I'll be calling an emergency housing crisis meeting at Wellington City Council. We're going to get people around the country to come here and build some houses for students and essential accommodation, essential workers' housing, so we can get people who can work in the businesses in Wellington City. So that's my pitch for mayor. It's about bringing everyone together, getting back to 90%, 99% support for this council, and getting away from this 12% support. Thank you.
And I'd like to say thank you to our candidates for attending this evening. I wished we did have full house, but with It's in the Ballot, we seem to have the Wellington jinx where incumbents are running scared from us. I do can say, I do have three incumb, I do have two incumbents confirmed and one I'm waiting on confirmation. Sarah Free, the deputy mayor, has confirmed for her show. We've had Laurie Finn confirm, and I do also know Terry O'Neill has expressed interest. So thank you to those three candidates on committing to the show. We wish more incumbents happen, but at this point, we're sitting at three so far. And I think on Sunday, we're going to be hitting five. Thank you to the audience for coming tonight and braving with us for the two hours of fun for It's in the Ballot. Thank you to Linda for stepping in at the last minute, helping ask our questions. And can we also thank Eddie and Stacey, who are jointly doing remote work today, Andre and Ray, who are in the studio for making this show happen. And tonight, you would have seen a new reel pop up in the air breaks. These businesses who have helped us get forward, basically, would like to thank Bean Here, which is myself, Little Oaf Bread, which is Linda's business, Mush's MMK, which is my friend Mush's business, Greenstone Consultants, which is Dr Marion Leighton, who is one of our, an avid cycle, cycleway supporter as well, and cyclist in Newtown. I'm trying to think who else. We also thank you to the Newtown Residence Association. They have helped us with the ability, we can use them for an umbrella organisation for funding, when the day does come. And we'd also like to thank you, thank Martin and Anna from the Newtown Festival Trust, who helps us to do our printing. Now, our next show's coming up tomorrow, if I can get down my list. We have got the Greater Wellington Regional Council, Kapiti Coast constituency show, happening at the Kapiti Impact Hub tomorrow. If you want to wait for Friday, we have the Harbour Ward show for the Hut City Council. And I can confirm to you, incumbent Tui Lewis, the deputy mayor of Hut City, is going to be there, along with Petra Sim, who is challenging her for the role. So in Hut City, we're getting 100% attendance rate from our candidates. If you, for Sunday, we've got Lampdun Ward being held at St Mark's Church, which will be this Sunday night, not St Mark's Church, St Mark's School, get it right, which I believe Ray went to St Mark's School as a kid. Yeah, 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 so there, on Monday, we will be back at St Mark's, this time in the chapel, with the Greater Wellington Regional Council, Purniki Wellington constituency. And on Tuesday, we've got the Te Fanganui Otarra Maori Ward Show, also in the St Mark's Church, St Mark's School Chapel. So we've got a full week up ahead, so there are many shows you can consider and tune in to. Thank you for everyone who has been here tonight, and we will see you tomorrow at 7 o'clock from the Kapiti Coast.